I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Declaration of any abstentions or contracts?
I have none.
Okay, looking at consent agenda, tonight's agenda, we're going to facilitate our lawyer being here, move discussion item 8A to the top. And we will not be doing any action on 7B 22 at this time. Any other adjustments to the agenda?
I'd move that we approve tonight's consent agenda with the modification of item 8A being moved to prior to item 5, and no action being taken on item 7B this evening.
Second?
My second, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of the...
No, could I abstain as I was not here for the last meeting?
Okay, so we're going to look at the status, project status on Mr. Dunkie's property. And you should have, in order, a list of the state requirements for an impound lot. Okay, so you've got a map.
I have some more to deal with.
Um, sure, I'll take another one.
Can you do the map?
Yeah.
So it has some public draft calls if you don't have it covered. I haven't known one of those kind of objects so far.
Is that same one, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So what I'd like to do at this point is have my map, the map of the usual habit. It includes Roundy Mountain Road. And Mr. Dunkie's property. Your house property, Mr. Dunkie, is...
Um, mayor? If you and Mr. Dunkie are aligned, I would sure like to have him just do a short presentation as to what he wants to do. I've heard hear and tell of what he wants, I've seen the property. I'd like to hear what he has to say about what he wants to do.
Can you hear me here, Ricky?
Yeah, if you would use the mic, it helps record him.
It is, if you speak directly.
Alright, great. Okay, basically from the planning zoning community, what I'm trying to do is build a quality impound service. And then later, on the upper topic, there's three lots that were picked in the lookout. The lot that you had to question right now, the impound lot, is 246. That is the largest lot there, but really it's a little bit back. There's no utilities on that piece of property. So best use, if you're planning zoning, unfortunately, is that that'd be a great place to put the impound lot. For viewing purposes, you can't see it from the hood. If you go back to where I live off of Roundy Mountain, and where the Triplex is, standing there looking forward, you can barely see the public defense. If you go by there, we have got complete defense in that. We've got all the slats in everything, right in the all we've got left to do is to do two strands barbed wire. From the inside right there. As soon as the barbed wire is done, all those cars that are front hall just go right hand to the barbed wire.
You got the front done? I don't know, I check when I go by. Come on, sit right up there and start looking at it. I mean the front was...
No, the front is, the front's not part of it. The front will eventually be a little small car lot.
No, I mean the front part of the impound lot, but of course the back where the chain link was. I gotta walk the front.
Oh, where you down?
Oh, about two months ago, and I pretty sure I cared about this before it was...
Oh, yeah, it's completely, it's completely, I'm not here, what is that? But it's completely closed in as a just, as a best for that.
Yeah, and you can't, you can't see that road.
Right.
I mean, I guess you could, it really would.
Right, which is a good thing. And I take a lot of times when people say impound lot, they say wrecking yard, and it's not that. We're not talking about wrecking yard. If somebody proposed a wrecking yard, I'd be the first one to say, no, get that thing out of here.
Which property do you do, what is your home now?
Um, I mean, just right back.
Yeah, it actually attaches right to the property. There's the property right there. Here we have the impound lot. This one is ours right there. It actually touches the corner, we just make a fence post. It actually touches, and if you take a look schematically, probably it'll encompass the rest of the mountainside. You've got the ditch coming down along the east, and the, coming on the north side, on the east side. And then you've got the mountain there, and it encompasses the whole block side.
So you can't, it's a perfect place to build this type of operation. Wayne, did you see what I was talking about?
Yes.
But what I did is, I took a look at some of the things that I thought would be objectionable. You know, one of the things I know is general estate, is that with that other property being over there available and up for sale, obviously you want to make sure you know you don't have a dump out there. So what we did is, we basically went into that property, and quality homes was there before. And I don't know if you guys ever went onto that site before we got it, but it was just loaded with tires and debris, trash. So we cleared all that stuff out, so that'll help with your sale if you get a chance to sell back.
That property's very close.
Oh, good deal, then I'll have some nice neighbors. But furthermore, viewpoint wise, as far as anybody saying, well, I had a light way of looks, it wouldn't make any difference, because they can't see it. You just can't be seen unless you actually walk to, over to the lot. Now, if you've got that property sold from the southern side, if they start building right along that little small road, of course they will, but it's all closed in now, and it's got the real nice vinyl slats. I had a real good recommendation, go with the vinyl slats, it's a little cheap stuff, which substantially more expensive, but definitely is not going to fall apart, you're not going to see the variety of looking changing things you can see on a lot. I think we've gone the extra mile. We also went and did the DOT road base, we didn't do the old cheap road base, but the state requires, yeah, the DOT road base. Put that all in there. The tang length is 11.5, it's not the cheaper big stuff. Everything is done first class, we've got roller gates over there now. So it's really a nice lot. I still do have one question though, obviously it probably had a later date. I know the mayor was talking to me about lighting, and I'm still not sure what I could do for lighting. I mean, I could hook it up to my other property, which it does have a logical to go back there, but I agree with what she was saying, she sure doesn't want to have to have a big ol' hang in light. But when I said, I just need a little more clarification on that.
We supposedly have a lighting ordinance, but we've not been able to find it in any of our files. So we will need to address that.
Okay, that'll be fine, because I do want to create a security system. And it's not required by the state, as of right now, I've done, I work the state guidelines for everything. The other, the state doesn't require the slats or anything, the city does. So I think we've confirmed that everything is going to establish.
Well, I understand that we're doing one parcel, two businesses.
The second business isn't in business yet. Well, I guess you could say it's a plain and impound, but they could use it to go together as a second business.
So you, but Dunkie had cars to sell upon that front parcel?
Not at this point, no. Those cars are just sitting there until you finish the impound lot. Those are cars that will go up for sale after you get licensed, you can't do anything with them at this point.
So you don't have a used car license to sell cars at this point in time? So we're not even dealing with the front, with the front portion of that property?
Not at all.
There's three lots, I think.
Right, there are three lots, that's correct. If you take a look there where R and R is, you've got a little small lot in there that encompasses the office building area. And then you've got like a vacant area right there, right beside it to the left, right before you get to the ditch.
Yeah.
Okay, so you've got those two lots right there. And then that second lot is the one that actually attaches to 247.
Okay, so we're not dealing with any kind of dealership, anything to do with that front portion? And those cars may be moved off that front portion?
Just as soon as the barbed wire is up, I just don't want to try running barbed wire around with the cars sitting out there. So as soon as, hopefully we'll have that done next day or two.
And that cleans that up, and you're still dealing with impound just under the town?
Yeah, I am in the process of, did come down and picked up a permit application to start building a little office over there. But that's a different agenda, and that's where we'll start taking the, getting the ownership. At this point, strictly impound total.
No, at this, at this point, I still can't give you a business license, because this is not part of our boundary of our...
Right, have you all voted on that yet? Do I add that to the...
It will not be happening tonight.
Okay, I hope so.
But I did notice that on the state, it does require some sort of office.
Right, the state will require that, so before I can actually get a license from the state, the office has to be built. That's why I said I just came down and got the permit to start building that. And so, for all intents and purposes, until the office is in, I can't apply for a state license.
Are you planning on that office being on lot 247?
Is that the one closest to R and R, which I've... Yes, that's correct. If you'll take a look from the aerial views, you can see where the old office for Quality Home District, and it'll be about half that size, it's not going to be as big as what they have. We'll have a nice deck out there with all offices.
So, two things that our councilman who's not here had expressed concern about. One was that there are obvious bulldozer teeth marks fresh in the hillside. And he was concerned about the hillside having been destroyed or whatever.
If you go up there and you actually took a look at it, all it was, it was falling debris that was falling all over the side. If you take a look at my fence, it actually goes like that, so because we did not want to impact on that. Because you hadn't taken a look at it until you thought that should not be disturbed. And so we made sure we didn't do that.
Yeah, I've got a strange looking fence out there.
And the other, well, sorry, two more. He felt that according to our ordinancees on parking lots, it requires paved, but not just roadways.
Well, are you kind of up...
Yeah, and that's, that would be the, the deal to a part of it, not the...
Yeah, then we'd have to do the impound lot.
Impound lot, ask to be, be discussed in the air, ask to try to save for the roadways. Well, we don't have the ordinance addresses of impound lots. The council's all fit to require solid surface pavement. The council puts you there.
And one of the things that I was thinking is, after I've done the research and pulled this up, and actually talked to about five different people who got low vehicles, as to just what they meant by road base implications, was that that was an acceptable company, as far as they were concerned, for an impound lot. And an impound lot wouldn't necessarily be described as a parking lot. Parking lot is something where people drive in, stay two hours and ride out. So it could be incorporated to 17 on an impound lot, that it was, as long as it was in form into state regulations that we allow. But that would be something that we would have to consider and put in. It's not currently on a, the draft that we're thinking of for 17. So that was the second thing. And the third thing, he was concerned about the fencing, but it is, it conforms to what the state does. It conforms to concealment with the, these aren't those, they're vinyl ones that I've seen, or whatever. The plastic things, which is like, these have clips, and they're much heavier, is there a life expectancy on...
Two years.
Twenty years? Or do the others usually blew away within two or three?
Yeah.
But his concern was, oh, that white fence stands out like a sort of... So objections, questions?
Questions, if I could. The property that the impound lot is located on is owned by Christina Michelle Dunkie.
That's your wife.
Not your wife. Is, are the businesses owned by your wife as well, by you, or by others? They're owned by you, and you own the property. And the thing is, I'm very pleased to hear about the top quality work that you'd like to do, but what I'm also hearing is it's been done. And I'm a little bit concerned just about the sequence here with regard to work being done before it's made it through the planning commission, before it's made it through the town council. Because as a town, we just don't yet have in place the necessary specifications for an impound lot to be operated within leaves. If one were to look for permitted uses, we don't have it yet. And I'm not trying to judge whether I think it's a good idea or not, but I'm an arse looking, I had it at the time going, well, I'm sorry. A good idea or not. But my worry is just that, sequence wise, I almost get the feeling we're being asked to admit what has happened, as opposed to approve what has been done.
Actually, and I'm not going to appreciate that one, but that wasn't the situation. What it was, is I have boats, I have wave runners, I have other things that normally if you drive around town, you see people stuck in their yards and in their front yards and stuff like that. It was going to go up, whether or not I got an impound lot or not. And so that was, and I had addressed that earlier, is that fencing was going to go to my property. And in hopes that an impound lot would go through, that would be great, because the state requires that once it's an impound lot, that my personal stuff has to go out. But it's actually a two-part fence, either so you see the second part of it exactly there. But you can't have personal property or access to, by individuals into an impound lot, once it turns into a lot. At this point, it's just personal property fencing, and I want to turn it into an impound lot, then I have to perform what the state wants.
Okay, now, but are any of the vehicles that have been there for quite some time impounded, or...
No, 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 not far, no. No, these are different vehicles that I've accumulated over the last year or so. If we can, want to get rid of this, that or the other, most of them. And the ones that don't, will be running very shortly. But we're preparing for the fact that hopefully by the end of summer, that we will have a small leadership. And when that goes into the long road, of course. In the meantime, it's going to hide back there, the impound lot's ready to go. When the office goes up, I basically at that point can apply for both. I can officially use a state impound, along with the city's requirement to have an office, and at the same time, get the power of ownership.
And you know you're going to have hard surface that parking lot, along with, along with the beautification, landscaping?
Yeah, we went through the landscaping thing. Fortunately, it's already got the huge, big contract, the plot for the park, which we'll be using for the vehicles to begin with. And yeah, move a little, we will get the rest of it. Right now, my biggest concern is the front, the frontage area, because of what's happening with the roads. We don't really know exactly what's happening with the roads right now. So obviously, I will have to have you tell me, yeah, go ahead and do it, or no, don't do it, because the roads may be widening and it's going to create a bunch of property. So at this point, I'm not sure what to do with the front. But as far as, I even decide, of where it's already existed, that's already part of the planning.
And put the beautification in. And I guess we're getting ahead of ourselves a bit.
Right, that, obviously, you're going to...
Now legally, Gary, are we allowed to issue a business license if he doesn't have a state license at this point in time for an impound lot? That becomes a little bit of a problem. The direct answer is no. It does become a little bit of a problem, the law means the state will say, well, they should use a state license, or should be a local.
That's correct.
And the locals say, well, they should use a local, and should get the state, right? Oftentimes, the state will agree to go off a correspondence within the town that says, once the state license is obtained, we will, we met all the clients, we will license local. Sometimes they'll do that, so you don't actually issue a license. If that does become a bit of a problem. Can I ask a couple questions, mayor, just give a little knock on the door with the side? I don't know if you have this...
You want to see the map, is that...
Yeah. Are you familiar with the property? Well, I have a question on the leasehold ownership, is what I want to know. So you're going to put the lot on 22, people would say, correct, okay? Okay, who's we? Okay, so you said this one, and your wife?
No, all three properties are actually inherited. The business will be sold.
And you're looking at putting the sales lot where?
That's where you... There's an existing foundation there, from the quality homes was there. It's already got all the utilities run, everything. Just a matter of building a small office and getting...
So the, the office for the impound will not be on the impound parcel?
Correct, which is not a parcel.
This is just going to be used for storage and other vehicles, right?
As far as the impound license?
On the 247.
Correct.
So when someone wants to come get out of impound, look them up at 247 at the office?
Exactly.
We'll go pick it up and bring it up.
Exactly.
Where's the access?
There's a road, if you come right down there, see this is the hitch, a great big ditch right there? There's a road that comes right straight down to it.
For a great amount of gear.
It just curves like a giant song.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly.
And so 251, how many use for impound?
That'll be part of the sales lot at one, at some point in the future. That's what we were discussing, that will have to be asphalt in that area here, and there right along here with that asphalt.
The state doesn't have a problem with getting by an officer?
No, matter of fact, you can actually use one office to govern all when you're lots. If you had other sales, other impound lots throughout the city, which like, say Southwest was doing when police had that thing down here, is the exact same thing. As long as you have a central office, you can have the lots in various places.
I understand, but I'm talking about have the same office serve the sales and the impound.
No, there's no problem with that.
No.
The road can mention, is it solely within your property, or is it...
Yes.
Okay, one of the other ordinances that we do have is that the first 10 feet of the property must be paved in some hard surface for any edge of the street, and while you're prepared to do that, whatever access points would be you want.
Right. Right now, like I said, my biggest concern is what's going to happen to the road.
Right, where does the 10 feet start?
Right, exactly. So, yeah, because it could impact on how I actually design our parking area, so that people can actually stop, which means I don't have to push the cars back park. So, yeah, at some point in time, you guys are going to have to tell me that this is working that way. And so that'll be after I do the, get the office all built ready to go.
Other questions?
No, I said I bought the property, I said I must not maintain attention on Tuesday, I was at the theater. It must have been moved before I go through that, that phase of the scene. And I, I'm tired, I, and so I just can't ask over. It's hard to see down that valley, I think that's, that eyesight.
And that's one of the things, the planning's only like that, is if you basically can walk all down Main Street until you're almost up to the fire department, then if you look back and see along the side of the fence. At some point in the future, I want to do the cycle streets right along the side of the cheese hands, see it at all. But it's always to my advantage to make sure that, the more security I can provide, the better off I am. So not only would I add to this beautification thing, you know, that we'd like to do, but initially, you know, we've already got the fencing in the place there to make sure that the security is there. I always feel like it's a munk, you know, for whether it's old English dams, because you got the big, that ditch is like 15 feet. And unless you're a little kid, just loving to climb, you don't want to go there.
Some of our, a portion of our ordinance requires that the commercial have a solid fence, a masonry, masonry fence between that and residential. However, on your property, pretty much from halfway through that lot to, to your property and the triplex next to you, it is just a wash. So not having the commercial aspect touching residential property.
And the big thing about it, in addition to that, mayor, is that from the corner of that house, looking toward the property, you really can hardly see anything, you can see the very tops of the light fence, that's about all, so you can't see anything.
Now, if, if there's a concern about, about dust with traffic, one of the things that I thought might be added to, to the ordinance, if we can draw it up to the past, might be requiring a, a single lane of asphalt going from the street all the way to the impound lot. As a point 10, 15...
That could be quite expensive.
I know, I put down something like that.
Yeah, the thing is, with the road base, if you water it down on your lot base or your construction, you know, neighborhood...
You're going to want to do that if you have builders, but you don't want to do that and maintain that if he's going to have a dealership up front anyway. And not just cars are going to be dust covered, watching cars every day.
Yeah, at some, at some point, we'll have the whole thing asphalted. But initially, that's, it's been pretty much cost for you, a lot of that, because fortunately, what we're trying to do, we started this business strictly no debt. We don't have, we don't really have all the property, we give it to the squider, everything we pay for. So, we'll, I feel like coming here and dirty the place up and take off the way we paid for it too. So, you know, we're here to stay. And so anything that we can do, obviously to make it look better, we're going to do that.
Well, I think, but one thing that needs to happen is, is, and we're talking about this, we've talked about this, as I was just...
Definitely do.
You know, maybe some sex, hip hop section approach, going into that. Where it doesn't, too much, just part asphalt on my, my six streets.
Well, where you're pulling in?
On that, where the asphalt meets, meets the road base right here, just, just an approach here.
Where you're probably just...
Just, 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 well, where you're pulling in, just so you, so we're not breaking off that asphalt on city, on the, on the, on the highway, on the full avenue.
Don't you have to do much more damage than ever?
Actually, actually, it's happening on Silverway every day, so, yes, more and we get it, we do worse. But, yeah, it's not really the shake. So, we have to, to draft, and that's why we're going, are going to stay here, a, the ordinance to accommodate.
Right, I understand that.
And if you are planning on doing an auto sales, then it would be a parking lot in front of you.
Correct, and I understand, and I'm prepared to do that once we get to that level. I just need to know the boundaries, because I, like I said, I, at this point, I just don't know what to do up there. So you guys advise me, and that's what I'll do.
Okay, at this point, mayor, my understanding is we have not had a hearing at the, the planning commission level, so a hearing would be required, I believe.
Right. That's what we discovered. For seventeen, we couldn't find evidence of a public hearing.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there was.
That's what I thought, that's why.
We've done three public hearings.
Well, we had four, six, one, three, or twenty-two, seventeen. We couldn't find any public hearings for seventeen, so that's why we needed to, we couldn't move ahead.
Well, I think the reason being that you didn't find anything is because nobody said anything. Nobody got a, nobody had one thing to say about it.
There's no public hearing published.
No, it's not, not a public hearing, it was published from the town.
There was one on four, twenty-two.
Yes, sir.
And twenty-three, but there was none on seventeen.
If you want, we can have it for this next meeting, if you want to just go ahead and do that, then we'll have our public hearing.
We won't have time, but what we can do is we can go ahead and have a public hearing at the town, at next town council.
Yeah.
It'll be after, after.
And you just set up your recommendations?
Yeah, which was what we did originally anyway. What you have is our recommendations.
So there was a public hearing, one public hearing planned, which may have dealt with two ordinances that I don't know.
Seventeen.
The signage and.
And then we also have the master road path public hearing, like the signage public hearing.
Yeah, those make shoes sound.
Makes shoes sound. No, I think we have that separate district on the same time we have the public hearing for the master road path, but maybe it's just a bit documented.
Yeah, I don't think it got published as such.
We have a public hearing on Thursday.
Since there has been numerous inquiries.
Give them a chance.
You can't sell cars.
Gary, do you have any more questions or?
Okay, so you'll start working on that in the meantime, I guess, the state license.
Right, I'll go ahead and submit.
Correspond with, yeah. That way you put your draft ordinance in your district.
Okay, before you can put up lighting, and before you can.
Oh, I'm not going to do that part. Hey, you tell me that's okay, so we, that's fine, you have a last.
With the plan, we have to have a public hearing on the impound lot, and then we have to vote on it.
So we, we need to do that.
Planning, at this point, we can schedule it for the tenth of July.
Okay, well hopefully by that time I'll have all my paperwork in the office.
We'll, we'll vote on that. We'll be discussing if we can vote on it.
We can.
Okay.
And just because we pass it, doesn't mean that we have to have all this stuff in place already. That didn't have to happen. But we have to have that in place because we can issue a business license.
So we'll, we should handle a public hearing, we'll post public hearing, put that on an action item, so we'll vote on the public hearing.
Right.
We'll be able to get those public for writing. We have that pending.
We've got two of you writing.
Do you have any more questions for us?
No, I appreciate you guys, thank you. I appreciate you.
Thanks, Larry.
Okay, the.
Excuse me, mayor.
Yes.
Do we want to invite our council to leave the, so in line at your point, rather than stake the balance on the, I thought that was the purpose of reorganizing, so.
Yeah, the rates of, the rates of council, I, I absolutely present.
You're welcome.
Thank you for staying, Gary. Mayor, just when they mentioned I did look over that fire.
Oh, yes, did you have any?
Thank you. Thanks, Gary. Thank you, sir.
So, public hearing. Got a motion to open the public hearing?
Salute.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on the fourth of July fire ordinance is open to the public for comment. Okay, how about?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on that.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Allen Roberts, I live through seventy-six South Main. The intent of this ordinance, I think most people are in agreement with, I'm not sure the restrictiveness, when you're talking about matches and smoking materials, I question whether we can get that restricted and not be challenged at some point for have a real issue trying to enforce something to that extent. In the whereas is, the last whereas, the governor of the state of Utah has recommended that cities and towns consider banning certain fireworks, open fires and other potential sources. That certain fireworks seems kind of ambiguous there in that language, but I have a concern on the first purpose, in section one, the purpose, this ordinance authorizes Steve Lewis, the fire chief, as a local fire official. I, I think that's probably a poor language to be specific on names, whether it's just addressing a local fire authority, however, that comes about. The other thing I had a question on was the enforcement, where it talked about every officer charged with enforcing state municipal laws in a jurisdiction of municipality, including the fire marshal. Is that a state fire marshal or a county or, I guess, to me it just seems like it needs to be a little more specific, not a name, but the fire marshal or gentleman. Thank you.
Thank you. That, Steve Lewis's name was going to be removed from, from this, and so it would read, this ordinance authorizes the fire chief as the local fire official for this municipality to prohibit open fires, use of any ignition source, including fireworks, lighters, matches and smoking materials when hazardous environmental conditions necessitate controlling the use thereof. This, this wording is, is pretty close to what the state fire marshal has put out by, and the state fire marshal's prohibition that's been published effective the twentieth of June, it states, all smoking and smoking must take place inside a closed building or vehicle. And any, any campfire has to be within a, a forest service type approved fire circle. But it, it is, is, is very restrictive, what the state marshal has put out, and that was supposed to be at the county courthouse today. So I, I guess you're thinking some steps outside their house to smoke, not their cigarettes, on their front porch, I suppose if they were still under, under their own roof of the porch, that would be considered okay. I, I haven't read what Chief Lewis is going to put out, it's supposed to be posted tomorrow if this passes. On section five, where it says, in this county shall immediately post copies, that was what we were thinking of, maybe this time, since we got this in place, we would post copies of the written order, but the order immediately is being stricken from the ordinance itself. Comment about, on section seven, enforcement, that every officer charged with enforcement of state municipal laws within the jurisdiction of this municipality, including the fire marshal, is hereby charged with the responsibility to enforce this ordinance, referring back to the purpose where it will state, what authorizes the fire chief as the local fire official. It seems that would clarify that particular aspect there. Any other, yes, thank you.
Sam Muster, any other question? How exactly do they authorize it and is it some type of criminal activity if they catch somebody?
Yes, it's a class B misdemeanor.
Okay, so who in our town's actually going to authorize that? Besides?
The sheriff.
Steve Lewis?
The sheriff's deputy.
Around the fourth of July or up until, so is this meaning that you cannot do any type of fireworks three days before and three days after at any time?
If that's what his order stipulates.
And what does it mean certain kinds though? Is he going to individualize it out, so if you go to Walmart and buy a bunch of stuff, how do you know which ones you can have, which ones you can't?
The, the state fire marshal said all fireworks through his order. So that's for unincorporated areas. My guess is Chief Lewis will be marrying that one, saying all fireworks.
Okay, so I have a, maybe stupid question, but if they're allowing them to sell them in the Walmart parking lot and everywhere in the entire county, whose law supersedes? Because if it's legal to sell them and it's legal to do it and nobody has posted for the most part, if you're buying them because it's in the Walmart parking lot, you would think that.
State fire marshal would supersede all that.
But the state fire marshals is good for unincorporated areas, that's why we are doing something for ours, because the fire danger is extremely high.
Right, and I, I completely agree with that, I lived that last year, but my question is, how do you expect people that are in the Walmart parking lot buying it and it's incorporated, I mean, we're incorporated here, how do you expect them to buy this and then it's okay to buy it, it's okay to bring it home, but it's not? I think we need to get the word out.
Right.
We need to get the word out a lot quicker before everybody's spending hundreds of dollars on it.
Well, and last year, maybe we need to talk to Steve Lewis about this, last year we allowed, we allowed them to light fireworks at the pod.
That was the craziest, most horrible thing I have ever dealt with in my entire.
I wasn't there, it was in my front yard.
I know, but it's just, it's not safe.
Wasn't it?
No, I mean, you have these little teeny tiny kids with sparklers running around a hundred square foot concrete pad, I mean, come on, they're little tiny kids, and then beside that, they're lighting these off and they're spinning all over with fifty kids standing on a hundred square foot pad. I mean, it would be much more safer in the front yard.
Hundred people with blankets.
A hundred people with blankets, and then they're like bursting up all over the place, because, you know, they buy them at Walmart and you can, you can do whatever you want, and they're not little tiny ones, so they burst up all over, there's little kids, you know, it's just, it was not safe at all. And I know they have a lot of fun, but on the other hand, you know, those are really high, high temperature, everything, it's just, anyway, I understand what you're saying, so.
Before you sit down.
Well, to answer your question about how do you effectively convey this into the public?
Right.
The ordinance calls for that, it has a section about public knowledge, says, in this county shall meet and understand that, shall post copies of the written order of the local fire official, and these three public places within the town, post a copy of the order on the official website, county website, inform all local news media outlets of the order, provide a copy of the order.
Any recommendations?
If you're going to do it, do not do it in a hundred square foot area, open it up to either like block off the road and, and do something where it's a lot, you know, not so confined, all these little teeny kids with sparklers running around their eyes.
So from Main Street, the fire department would be from Main Street to Valley Road?
Block off the road, block off some road and let people do it there, where, you know, they're not so confined to a little area, I mean, I don't know which road you want to block off, and if they really want to do it.
The fire department lottery would be there, so you can block, block that area off.
And you know people are going to buy them, just if, if you know they're going to buy them, you know they're going to do it, provide some area that's smaller than the basketball court to allow them to have fun. I mean, bigger, bigger.
It's going to be awesome. Fire, like it's fire.
I don't like to do them.
They don't start fires.
So, yeah, that was one reason why we went into that list through before, it's legal to buy them, so the people would be notified at any time. Because we've got that three day window before and before, so this would be up, to give them some notice.
If I could just respond, I, I appreciate the input, I think we should make sure to forward it to Chief Lewis, there are competing factors at work, obviously, he will be considering the fire risks, but also the safety of the people involved is something there. And then the unfortunate part that sometimes may come into play as a parent's judgment as to whether they're going to permit their child to participate in an activity, whether it's safe or not. But I, I do appreciate the need that we have a focus on safety on a variety of levels here. It's not just a matter of a fire, which we painfully experienced last year, unrelated fireworks, but it's also the safety of children.
Right.
And we just want to make sure, I, I think though that it's, the person most qualified to make this decision is probably the fire official, but it's important to emphasize to them, we would appreciate his factoring in, safety beyond just fire safety, but the safety of the children.
And it's great if blocking on Valley Road.
Block off something.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the fire ordinance?
If I could also just add one thing about the enforcement question, it's, it's my understanding that within Utah, there is a very broad actual authority for anybody who is a law enforcement officer to enforce, it's not limited to just the county or the municipality you happen to be employed by, you actually have the authority, and I think that's what this is referring to here in section seven, that every officer in the state who has that technically could enforce it here. The likelihood of it happening, I don't think Iron County is likely to send people down here and look to enforce, but the actual way it's written within, say, Utah, all law enforcement officers do have that authority, and I think that's what the section is referring to.
You want to have a VOM law enforcement officer drive a vehicle or a national force?
And, and they, I believe, are empowered as well.
Yeah.
And since we've said work on the national force, even if, thank you.
I would just suggest, on the first page of the big pool place, which is now the pool we were named by the city council, it probably just chimes out the town.
We'll be a town for quite a while, won't we?
I'm sorry.
We'll be a town for quite a while.
For a few days.
And basically any other area, there's a spot, there's a city, near the very top, black building. And you said you wanted to strike the word of the new, second time?
Yes, because I hope we were drafting an ordinance that wouldn't just be for this year, it would stand for several years, so we wouldn't have to do this every, every June. And so, we immediately would apply for now, but not.
Even though, even though restrictions may change, this ordinance would be set in stone.
And the, the state requirement was, was effective June thirty, and until it is lifted, there was an end date, depending on. And until it is lifted, there was an end date depending on the requirements. In addition, the state ordinance also mentioned you couldn't do filing of metal in unpaid areas because of the risk of sparking. And as many of us witnessed last year, with the huge fire that we had here on the hillside in Leeds, and I know everyone in my neighborhood stayed up most of the night. A couple of weekends ago, when somebody in an unincorporated area set off high aerial fireworks. We called the sheriff's department and deputy had to walk in to the gated area to issue a citation for fireworks to be cleared. So, but we kept watch because, you know, one spark could set off a fire. That was really, we noticed otherwise. So, close, close the...
I move to close the public hearing on the Fourth of July Fire Ordinance in number 2013-02.
Second.
Call it favor?
All right.
And so, moving to action item.
Are we gonna take action on this, this evening there? I get the section three on what you do.
Yes.
Proceeds with the end of our agenda.
Well, can I have a motion to amend our agenda on the action item?
I don't know the answer to this question, but are we allowed to add an action item? I don't believe we are.
We can't turn off recorder and have the whole audience to record?
Do we have a special session tomorrow?
You need to be able to give, I guess, twenty-four hours notice. It has to be later tomorrow than the date of our live here. I'm available.
You can do a conference call?
Yeah.
Are you able to do that? I'll look.
After the hearing, I just announced I would. I'm gonna get on the recorder. I just, I just put it on speaker.
No, I'll be, I guess one person's in the door though.
Technically, I think we gotta get positive.
So, let's see, my order, on phone. Unless you run time on Friday morning?
It doesn't need to be done until Monday to have ten days. It only needs to be posted for ten days. We can do a work...
No, no, actually, I'm just twenty-four hours. Okay, Friday morning?
I was calling you morning to call you.
Even my phone?
Uh, yeah, I can call you today.
I can hear.
That way we could post it when we're over tonight and you ring over Friday morning?
What time do you do it Friday morning?
You know, it's Sunday at night.
Okay, so. Okay, we moved twenty-two, and so we have seventeen, which we have already done some discussion on. On seventeen, does anybody have any ideas on how we like word seventeen? So that would accommodate our discussion and things that you have already been saying earlier?
Yep. First of all, I don't think that automobile pickup yard is an appropriate use for the commercial zone. In a larger city, you can see it in industrial, which we don't have. So if we're gonna try and fit the square peg into the round hole, I think that's what we're trying to do by throwing it into the commercial.
I don't know what else you could...
I don't, yes, the user. Can I have something?
Yeah, but it's probably a good title.
We currently have a proposed under conditional use commercial.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
And so that would mean that just because somebody had commercial copy, that they can open an impound lot and it's still a property. So it's not likely to be opened in the door to have five impound lots.
Okay.
Okay, but it currently states that you do not see twenty thousand square feet, which is a little less than half an acre. And the yards, the yard is not considered. And just by eyeballing it, I think approximately that it was about hundred and thirty by, maybe a little over fifty, maybe fifty-five. So that would be about sixty-two hundred square feet, so well under this, what this provision allows for. Maybe we don't want it to be that big.
With the conditional use, like I said, I don't think there's any point finding it and making a P two, and it's in the, in the A five hundred.
Yeah. What's this zone? Is, are all three of these parts of the zone commercial? Not just the one with the electric, but actual one.
Yes. All right, Eric. Please, the front two, and please the back one.
This is the back one.
Just in reading the page that you provided of the state requirements for impound lot?
Yes.
I believe it says that's the requirements and standards for a state impound lot that could then be used by the motor vehicle division of police officers. While I realize that in all likelihood, somebody getting involved in an impound lot would want to be able to qualify for that usage, I also believe there are other reasons that people could have vehicles impounded and run through that kind of facility. And as a result, I think it would make sense for us to consider incorporating language that would make it that we wouldn't require somebody to meet the minimum state requirements for a state impound lot, even if they were trying to set up something and suggesting they wouldn't utilize it as a state one.
Any other thoughts on what I'm wondering about this?
The changes that are proposed to section seventeen point ten point one, for where commercial development, that's residential property, commercial property developed shall provide a six foot tall solid foundation wall along the property line, separating commercial and residential properties. The way I read that is saying that this may have to, for any commercial property owner that's developing that parcel, would have to put a six foot tall solid foundation wall along the property line. Now, using the impound lot as the example, because that's the one that's causing this to look at commercial district, chapter sixteen here. His actual fenced impound lot area is well within his property boundaries. But is this, are we to interpret this to say, well, even though that's the case, do they have to put a six foot tall foundation wall around the entire property?
He's not encumbering the whole property.
Sure. But, you know, if you, granted, there's no adjacent residential dwelling yet, but there's residential zoning.
No.
Surrounding it on three sides.
And unless the, looking at the language, it says where commercial development, but...
That sounds to me as if...
And the commercial development is not, it's probably two hundred, two hundred feet away from the residential.
Okay, but if it were seven feet away, it still wouldn't have let in. It just seems a little bit, little bit vague. I mean, I'm using a very extreme example, but I think there's, you have to be way to clarify it.
Yeah. So, can that carry to the...
Yeah. Yeah, I think I understand with ten, with ten being that, if you got somebody's yard, kids playing in it next to a commercial operation, solid base of wall makes sense for safety.
At this point, the residents might object to the fact that the N O R gets to look at the wash behind that place, because that's on his property.
Yeah.
Which is only commercially developed. As a floodway not, um, easy.
So do you want to act as the clarifier for the next meeting?
Yes.
Well, yeah, we've got to have a public hearing on it.
Yeah.
I would suggest then that we move on.
Well, I was trying to at least address some of the other issues. So it could have legal work at it and say, yes, no, under these things. Right, I noticed here that seventeen four point four, as the site plan must be the requirements of commercial site plan, developed chapter forty-six, which I have not examined to see the hard impacts with. And if y'all will also be there on one time in the comments, anything to see there? Okay, any, anything else in seventeen? Okay, so do you feel like it's hard to send the legal thing? Commercial site development, chapter? All right, so moving on to...
Why do we, excuse me, why please, join the experience? On the, on to, on the signs.
Okay, there's several, several reasons. You had to give what objection?
Oh, right, my question is just a comment.
A comment, but if that was valid. And in addition, impound lot, also the state has a requirement about size and...
About signage?
About signage. And I'm not sure that it actually fits in the plan, so I like to review that.
Okay, so we're gonna still, we're gonna stick up for that? Or we just, or are we just tracking the agenda?
We'd already struck it from the agenda. We can, we can still discuss it during staff for a while. So next on the agenda is the agriculture protection zone, still in the channel. And we need to make a vote on that. And they've gotten all the paperwork in and done, and they've gotten approval from the county advisory board, agricultural advisory board, whatever.
There is a process. Lucky's got it. We got the letter today from the advisory board. And when the council gets the letter from the advisory board, we need to schedule a public hearing to adopt this. This is, the town council should schedule all the public hearing to consider the recommendations of the public comments regarding the creation of E A E A. And the town council should approve modifications or reject the proposal. The proposal is approved, the town council should file the counter reported information for our essential source.
Okay, the town council needs to have, not just the planning permission?
No, it's already been with the planning.
And our question, the public hearing?
No, we planned, the council.
So the town council has to have a public hearing on this?
So it would be two weeks before we could do it all, yes.
Okay. Now, there was a public hearing on it, but that was a planned one?
No, I don't think we got a public hearing. We didn't get to the public hearing on E A E A, right? Because Bob Nicholson said, no, you have to go in effect this way.
Yeah, except we couldn't even find the county advisory board for a while.
I mean, it took us a while to find the advisory board. And in fact, we had to request the letter from them today. We were supposed to get one... Right, I mean, it took us a while to find the advisory board. And in fact, we had to request the letter from them today. We were supposed to get it by now, I guess. And Christie ended up calling him, because this was on the agenda, so we wanted to make sure we had her approved. So, they just signed it. Didn't they say, Christie, they just signed it a couple of days ago?
Yes, yeah, I mean, that's dated five twenty-eight, but he said that they had just got it signed yesterday, so I don't know.
They signed it, they'd already forwarded it to the, the county, they'd already forwarded to the county that they approved it. And so, but they signed it for us.
The council has to sign off on it too.
They signed, they sent the recommendation to the county, because they, in fact, if you, if you look at November seventh, two thousand twelve, Bob Nicholson did an agricultural protection area staff report. I don't know if you guys have that or not, but. Do you have that in your possession or not, but I just got to have an extra one. Here's an action. And it, yes, it, it pretty much tells you that we have to go through the proper steps instead of the town council, or excuse me, instead of the planning commission having the public hearing, it has to go first, it doesn't, it states that the town council then submits the proposal to the A P A advisory board and the town planning commission for the review and recommendations. Town planning commission and A P A advisory board shall submit their separate recommend, written recommendations to the town council within forty-five days. And then after giving a proper notice, the town council must hold a public hearing. And then in doing that, it goes directly to the county, and then the county puts it on the flat maps. And then it, it goes on, lower than, it says in section seventeen forty-one three oh five, sets forth the criteria to be applied in evaluating the proposals. And then after that, inevitably, what this does is I have the Utah Agricultural Protection Act. And in this, it states that for any new subdivision development located in whole or in part within three hundred feet of the boundary, this has to be disclosed. It says this property is located in the vicinity of an established agricultural protection area in which normal agricultural uses and activities have been afforded the highest priority use status. It can be anticipated that such agricultural uses and activities may now or in the future be conducted on property included in the agricultural protection area. The use and enjoyment of this property is expressly conditioned on acceptance of any annoyance or inconvenience which may result from such normal agricultural uses and activities. And that's what inevitably we'd like to have on any flat map that's going around our areas, so. At this point, if we just do the public hearing and after that, it's either yes or no. So, there'll have to be an action, public hearing slash action, I think.
Yeah, there's a public hearing tomorrow. Yeah.
All right, so we're at nine citizen comments? You read, I don't mind.
Cause it's the only time you can speak on the board there. How many comments?
Well, we've got all three in the, right? Right there, so.
All right, so moving on to, to staff reports. Does the treasurer have anything to point to on this one?
We, we are submitting our final proof handed to the state, which we have thirty days to do from the twenty-second of June. So, we're going to make sure that gets in early in July. And I hope to have with the new year, a new reporting system that will allow us to be kept very much up to date on a monthly and quarterly basis on different levels of reporting for how we are doing relative to budget as we move through two thousand fifteen, two thousand fourteen.
And, uh, anything on parks?
Uh, yes, I met with Dan from Forest Service and gave some direction on how to proceed with actually becoming a tree city. And I've got the application in hand. I'll be working on throwing that out. It's not due until end of year, but I'd rather be done now than later on. Uh, when, if I could, Dan, you're here, look at the future, it's going to require some information about, financial information related to. What we need to do is we need to show how much we're spending on tree-related activities. So, and it's only wages.
Water.
Water, yeah. So, I'll be working on that. I'll contact.
Um, anything on roads?
No, I just, I need help on roads.
Are roads need help?
Well, I just need them. In our last, our last conversation with Andy Rose, my thing was two-year-old thing, it just says, "Silver reef road needs to be fixed, this road needs to be fixed, this..." But, I mean, it didn't tell me from point A to point B, you know, what needs to happen. I, I need to physically write. And I don't want to think about civil reef, what needs to be fixed, what issues are there, make sure what issues are there on this part of town. But civil reef, I need to spend some time and, and we really can take a roadmap with us. And make the presentations, that could be done, yeah.
I want to ask you a question, Rose. Is there any provision for the county to participate, for example, in the Sima Park, you have increased traffic from what is it? That's a county user, have more traffic from business residents. If there are any possible way that county would participate for the help, I, I don't know. I'd like to explore that.
Yeah, cause they're beyond the county, passing travel, you know, things to, you know, get highway going south.
And all, all they use is that national forest, that they're, they're trying to go through. So, it would be nice if you could get some participation from the county or state in the best for that.
I think we made an inquiry at some point of the Forest Service and is that pretty much your own, you know?
Well, maybe.
Travel route.
That's the first answer, because it's necessary for them.
Okay, good point. Frank is not running the board, he's a, um, at this point, a land guy. And so, I, I, I think we need to look to you to, uh, give leadership on, uh, going to sort of pull whatever info you can out of him and direction and give him.
Yeah, cause what I've got is, like I said, we haven't discussed it once before. Draw it up.
The two-year-old thing?
Yeah, the two-year-old thing that just says, you know, this road needs to be worked on, this road needs to be worked on, this road needs to be worked on. It's like, well, what needs to be worked on? And I've got it off here, I just looked, compared it to that, just one time.
Something you probably don't know is that, um, no, thank you. Mr. Sant has done some investigation and found out that a sizable section of silver reef road from his property north to, I'm not sure exactly where, south by, of over five hundred feet, it, it is a rectangle owned by B L M. So, our silver reef road is owned by B L M. We are not allowed to even do any repairs on the road without their permission. Mr. Sant is looking into getting that permission from them for us on that, on our hand.
Because we're, I shouldn't say we're running out of time, but, but the longer we procrastinate on this, once we get into November, you know, we might as well wash our hands of it by next spring. We don't want, we don't want to do that.
What, too cold and put asphalt there?
Yeah.
So, you've got Mr. Sant's number, you can check with him, see where he stands on, on that, you guys have some information?
On that portion, but I still think it's, uh, it'd be great just to spend, you know, go from that time. And I'm starting, and I'm starting to build this, so, you know.
So, you can help with that?
I, I think we're busy.
If you'd like, I can take you around the spots that I'm walking a little around or highlight.
Well, and I'd like, you know, being a residence of, resident of Old Town Leeds, I'd like, somebody to let me drive down and sort of repair this mistake in Old Town Leeds, so I'm not being, I'm not being, so I'm non-biased by that.
I'd be happy to join you if you'd let me know when.
So, I've got that here. I just wanted to prepare to bring that up.
Yeah, are you good now?
Yeah, the only thing I had on the sign ordinance was a huge issue was, you know, thirty-two square foot for construction sign, you know. Minor, my, my largest construction sign, other entry signs, which are different, which are construction, into a small, small development, are four by four, especially here in Leeds, you know, most likely with the series, you know, four by four, I had the heck of a time, like, so I put a lot of three by twos up. I used to start putting up a thirty-two square foot sign and it's been better than that. And that's just a big sign.
But the sign ordinance actually says a four by six, which is only four, but that's still larger than what you're saying.
Well, the sign ordinance.
Construction sign is four by eight.
Yeah, you got, you got.
Or thirty-two square feet, it doesn't say dimension.
Four by, in a sense, a four by eight. And that's, that's an ex, that's extremely large sign.
Well, that's just a maximum size.
Yeah, that's maximum size, but there, there will be some people who take that for maximum size. And in all my developments that I've done, and most developments I've built, maximum size of the sign requirements, even the one I'm building now. And we're, we're putting four by fours in just because it's developed, set for so long, and I'm going to build it and develop. But the maximum, maximum size on second sign will be a nine square feet.
I think.
You have a lot of ordinances on your real estate signs.
Oh, sure. Well, I suggest that you search those ideas, maybe, you know, for that, and.
Everything else.
Our next meeting, we'll sit down and discuss sign owners.
Um, I appreciate, um, twenty-four.
Is there, is there, yeah, so you do.
A couple of other things going out. Is, uh, your sign on it, I'm saying, I don't think that means a twenty-four, fifteen, so, we need to address this. And even the, the real estate signs, they'll see points of property is addressed, so, so we need to, to look at a sign for it. To do the same, several, like, you know, order that. Silvery Cafe has done a very nice sign up, but it's not, well, I mean, the, the, it's, it's important to direct traffic there, but currently, it's not labeled.
And signs are, signs can be real hard, real hard to, uh, you're a long, a long time sign user, you come to, to, as part of your construction assignments, real estate sign, it's hard to police that.
It's a balancing act.
If it is balancing that.
Between effectively conveying the information, whether it's a sale or you're outside of the building or something, and keeping the city state clean and, um, sure, so, so I think that's why we are reviewing ourselves.
So, it's been called to my attention, for each chapter that we alter, we, we have to hold a public hearing with the incident cost of advertising that and the pain in the neck of the, of holding each of these hearings and, um, and going through all of that.
Maybe what we do is, we have several coordinates, is, let's say, advertise multiple public hearings on the same night.
Yes, that would be good, but here is what I would like to do. Land use ordinance is two thousand, that's five years. Every five years, big time to relook at everything. And since we are altering so many of these at this time, I think it would be good to just redo the whole land use ordinance. Look at it again, get it updated, and then have one public hearing to deal with everything. In the meantime, and in seventeen, we could, you know, do something with that, we can get ahead of time, but getting a coordinated work updated, because already we have several chapters that have been amended several times. And so, the naming of all these amendments to the chapters is getting convoluted, I would say, and, 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 and. So, we have twenty-five chapters in our current land use ordinance, and there are five of us. And I would like each of you pick five that you would like to, to address. And several of them go together, like the rural residential, residential, multifamily residential. That looks like the chapter thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Would somebody like to take that for us, yeah?
Mayor, if I could just, if I could ask just like a couple of things. One is, I believe we've already had public hearings through our planning commission on a few of these chapters.
Yeah.
That we could, without having advertised, without having to go through the expense, we could complete the process and actually get those updated. The other is, I just question, as I'm hearing you say this, what is the purpose of our planning commission if we as a council are going to redo the land use ordinance without planning commission?
Because I wanted each of us to have a fuller understanding of the land use ordinance, because even though the planning commission works at it, we need to make the decisions. And so, we, all, so what I'm doing, asking you to do is to, to examine this, because at some point, you would have to address the whole thing. And bring some initial thoughts which you have. I'd just like to, to get us a little bit more familiar and, um.
I think that's true.
Maybe what council members do is be comfortable with the word answers.
I, I, I don't disagree with being familiar with them. I've actually read through everyone that I know exists right now over the past couple of months, because I do think you need to know it. But when you talk about updating it, I just feel as if the planning commission is part of this process of updating it. And so, I just feel as if, you know, if you want to try to, you know, work where we designate certain council members to work closely with the planning commission on some sets of it, I think that would be a more effective way than, than to actually say, we're going to do it, because I, I just feel as if the, uh, that the planning commission needs to be, you know, involved in this process. We're going to have a planning commission that's active and.
I, I was, I was going to make the same assignment with them, which is currently on hand, three of them. But that's a good idea to, to ask each of us to, to take a, a certain section of them, to make sure that you are communicating with the planning commission, listening to what they're doing, and maybe bringing some thoughts to that process. So, they are, they leave next Wednesday. I have, have one person that I could add, his name is Reeve Brayway. Um, I have talked to him. He has never ever attended a planning mission meeting, doesn't know what the function of it is, but he is the, the one solid application that I, I can have. Other than that, we've got Danielle, we have.
Reeve's been an attorney for years and years, he's decided about this recently.
Right, he's not an attorney, he's not licensed.
He, he, he's been here for years, he, he's got some law background, so.
So, so we have Danielle. So, so we have Danielle, we have Bill Lyle, who's been on for a couple of years now. And we have Dale Nelson, who has some law associations with the town for having a, a planning commission and town council at some point in the past. So we've got three solid members. But if one of us is not there, we don't have a corner in terms of... So I could, I could appoint Reed, is my, like, we'll go ahead and appoint Reed, and then it will need to be confirmed after that later. We're probably won't ask for confirmation until we've seen you at a meeting or two. But, uh, but that's still, just takes us up the floor. The more eyes you have on, on this kind of information, the better it is. And I've been twisting a few arms.
If, if I could make a further suggestion, I, I, I would like to see the process move forward, but I want it to be productive as possible. And I think it would be better, rather than just randomly selecting numbers amongst the town council members, if we agree that on July 10th, between now and then, you can speak with the planning commission to discuss with them the idea about this update process. And the town council members could read through and see if there are particular chapters that they feel, kind of just be prepared to rank order, and the end, there may be one that nobody wants to do. We need to decide who's going to work on that anyway. But I'm just concerned if we go one to five, six to 10, 11 to 15, we're not going to be making the best use of the available time and resources of town council. But I think on, on July 10th, we, we should agree to come back here, have a look at the index, not necessarily review all the chapters, but to indicate a, a rank order of where we individually feel we could add the most value, if there are some that specifically...
Well, and that's, you know, when it's grouping together, you know, Joe and I, we're involved in real estate, you know, we've got rural residential districts, we've got business district, you know, motor, home districts, commercial district, open space district. I mean, these are, these are things, hillside ordinance subdivisions, I mean, these are things that Joe and I can split, take half, you know, on the, on the development, on the building side of it. And he's involved in, in all that as well. And then as far as geographical and things like that.
The, the whole thing blends together, and each section often calls to, to question, to look through a different section for clarification. And I must admit, I just arrived at this today. So I do appreciate all the, the input on better ways to handle this, and thank you. Those are, those are some good suggestions. I just felt like, uh, instead of taking a whole year to arrive at this point, that you could, you could dive in somewhere and get started. I imagine 85% of this is solid, but if we don't look at it and examine it, then really don't know. Does this still fit who we are, where we are, and, and, you know, where the light is right now? And what, what do we need to do to, if anything, if anything, to update things? And, uh, so I thought that was a good suggestion, let's just take it, take it by grouping. So, um, what should we say? To, to look at before our next meeting on the 10th, shall we go through, um, chapter eight? Or is that too many? That would be, the general stuff. A lot of, some of these chapters are pretty short and probably fairly stable.
I, I guess I'm confused as to what you thought was a good idea, because what I was suggesting was the...
Okay, I'm sorry, save it.
What I was suggesting was the idea that we come back, we have a discussion, you would discuss with the planning commission chair, the idea that you want to go through this. The individual council members come back, having looked at the table of contents and indicate, as, you know, Nathan suggested, he and Joe may have some areas where, from their daily lives, they do it. But if we just randomly said, you know, tonight, one through five, six through 10, we wouldn't get there. And I think we could very, much more efficiently on July 10th, put together a process instead of just selecting a chapter to do between now and, and July.
Okay, so the plan then is, I'll be addressing the planning commission on, on revising this next week. And then two weeks from now, we are going to come together with our thoughts on...
Which chapters we individually think we could...
So this will be, so, so this may be modified, you know, this, you know, by your team, by the commission? For their recommendations.
Yeah, well, so the planning commission is going to have to, to rework this. But if they have no guidance, and there's only three of them, it's going to be... Yeah, I can read it.
I think the goal up here ought to be to rework and revise, but more to approach these ones with a, with a gristful eye, do they been applied to these leads today? Do they have been applied, would be imagined to be right tomorrow?
Or at least for the minutes, I guess.
Okay, so... Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
That there are four chapters being revised right now. I have both of you a book in there that you can take that are the current ordinances that are passed as they are today. But chapter four is in revision, 22, 23, and 17. Those are not in your books. So I will make copies of those for you to review if you want to make other modifications to them. Does that make sense? Okay.
Okay.
So that, that will take care of 20% of...
Yeah.
Which I think is also indicative of the planning commission evidently has some approach...
They're already moving ahead of it.
They're moving ahead on it, so that's why I want to make sure we coordinate with them and then know by July 10th, a unified approach that will get the job done effectively.
Well, I'll take, what ones, what ones are they working on right now?
Uh...
They're not. You can't have any one but those four.
Huh?
You can't have those four.
No, no, those are the four that I, I'll go ahead and take those four.
The sign ordinance?
I, I've read the sign ordinance. We've been beaten out like a dead horse that, since October. That, that's, that's pretty well cleaned itself up. There's just a couple of issues, and money issues come up as it does in our mod. But, and I, like I said, I just don't see any way, if they want to put up, I don't have any, any objection to people that are going to start to sign up four by eight, but...
It's big.
It's big.
And we got a lot of...
And blow is here.
And I think March, four by eight signs will be...
Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to basically introduce this plan, so that we could be moving ahead on and, and get it done sometime in the near future. I know it will not be done in a month, or maybe even two months. But I think, uh, with all of us working together on this, and the planning commission too, that, um, that we could have a revision for two bills and put a team.
Well, the planning commission's already got...
They knew, a new land use ordinance for 2013.
Well, the planning commission's already got four, and they've probably worked on another one at this point in time, right?
No.
They're working, they're working on four. I mean, if we could, if we could work on, on, honestly, five of them, if they've got four out now, and, and then we could take the, the, the five of us, take what they've got, and pass those, and they've only got 20. I mean, we could have that done by, by the first of the year. Instead of buying them up among city council members, or why not discuss them together as a group? And, and pass them off, because they've already got four ahead of us. Why don't we just let them keep running ahead of us and modify them, pass them off? Rather individually take a section and go with it.
Because all of those chapters are one ordinance. It's one ordinance, they're just chapters, and, and so what we've been doing is, you know...
So we're just...
A chapter at a time, knocking them out, instead of dealing with the ordinance also.
So they're not, so, so planning is just not dealing with the full ordinance, they're just dealing with certain chapters and certain...
That's what I'm saying.
So we want, we want, so we wanted to take the full ordinance and include, involve all the chapters.
With them on board.
With them on board.
So do I have a motion to...
I think Colin.
Motion to adjourn.
I think Colin. A second?